Another 30 seconds until we get started, just a couple others being admitted in the meeting. All right, I have 7:31 on my clock and just about everybody who's been admitted has now entered the meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call this June 23 city council meeting to order times now 7:31. Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance at this time? So, with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't know if you could hear the kids in the background, quiet them up. Would the council members please unmute and with the clerk please call roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
She's absent.
Okay, Bassassi, absent. Diastis.
Present.
Sunaka.
Here.
With five present and two absent, there's still a quorum this evening. And with that, I do want the members of the audience to be reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over in the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Members of the public who are joining us this evening that wish to speak during public comment time, you will be afforded the opportunity so long as you've provided your contact credentials and the subject which you wanted to speak about before the aforementioned time in this evening's agenda. Also written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will also be read aloud as well. Scrolling up into the agenda for the public to see, moving on with us. First order of business that we come to is a motion to approve the city council minutes. There are two sets of minutes. The first is from May 19, 2020, committee at a hole. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve these minutes? Thank you Alderman Cannon, thank you Alderman Sunaka for the second. By show of hand, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? And again, it requires roll call vote, so would the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yeah.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With five in favor and then opposed, those minutes are approved. This brings us to the June 3, 2020 special city council meeting minutes. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you Alderman Cannon, thank you again Alderman Sunaka for the second. By show of hand, are there any corrections, additions, or deletion to these minutes? For the record, Alderman Bassassi is joining now.
Okay.
Okay, and seeing no questions this time. The question is, shall these minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yeah.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, those minutes are approved. Moving further onto the agenda for this evening, we move on to the mayor's report. I have three quick items of interest that I need to address. The first one is the extreme number of phone calls I've received as a result of fireworks being detonated throughout town. This is actually a national problem as well. I don't know why, maybe because all fireworks are canceled. But I do know that they are still illegal in Illinois, still illegal in Rolling Meadows. And I know that our police are out and they will enforce these rules should they find folks who are detonating these fireworks. And for those residents who called, I am bringing it up as part of the mayor's report this evening. I also want to remind everybody for next Saturday on June 27th at the city market, members of the city council and myself will be present. We will also all be wearing face coverings, same with those who participate from an attendance perspective. We'll also be taking other precautions, safety precautions like social distancing, one-way avenues throughout the market itself. And then lastly, speaking of foot traffic and walking, I had a couple residents contact me throughout this week regarding the new sidewalk on Meadow Drive and the fact that it's new. However, it has not had the back fill or filling in of dirt around it. And they brought up some safety concerns, not to mention that it is, according to some, illegal for it to be exposed as it is for a certain duration of time. So just to keep that on the front of the inspector's minds, we go around and make sure that all safety areas in the public right of way are addressed and corrected. With that, are there any ward reports this evening by show of hand? Alderman O'Brien, your hands up, floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, just a real quick one, passing on some thanks and also a couple inquiries that came in to me regarding the storm water or the water main work being done along South Street right here in the third ward. Couple residents reached out regarding the dust with the lack of rain and a lot of the big trucks going back and forth to haul debris. Talked with Mr. Sucecki right away in the public works area. They are going to have a water truck that either has been out this week already or will continue or start to come out this week. So just wanted to let anybody that might be listening on the phone or via the video that I appreciate you reaching out. That's certainly what we are here for. And then the city has contacted the contractor asking them to supply a water truck to keep some of that dust down. Because I did take a drive through myself when it was kind of going through a dust storm. So I appreciate that Mr. Sucecki was on top of it and getting a water truck out to help keep some of that dust down. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien. By show of hand, any other word reports this evening? Okay, seeing no other word reports, we can move through the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the point where we open the meeting up to the public for 20 minutes for public comment. There is one signature on the list. And I just want to lay a couple ground rules and procedures for the public before engaging in this public comment. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes for the allotted 20 minutes. Please abide by this five-minute time. Questions and our commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. Profanity shall not be used or tolerated in any form. And with this point, I would like to open the floor up for Roger Fox. Roger, if you're calling in, it's star six, if you're on the computer, just unmute now.
Good evening.
Hello.
Roger Fox from 2803 Owl Lane. And I just wanted to listen tonight and call in in regards to the 2809 Owl Lane property that's adjacent to City Hall that's on your agenda tonight. And I didn't know if I was supposed to comment now or when that comes up on the agenda.
Now is the time, sir.
Okay, and I just wanted to reiterate the items that I had expressed at the plan commission meetings and that for the city to proceed with the storm water work, which they've indicated that they plan to do and to continue to maintain the landscaping and to take a look at the parking on Owl Lane right on the curve to see if that could be eliminated. And also to review the signage that was put up recently on the do not enter signs and authority only. And that's all I had for this evening.
Well, thank you for providing your comments. That now closes the floor for public comment. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which are items pending. The first line item is line item A, resolution number 20-r-63, which is to approve the purchase of a 2019 paving machine, which was postponed from the June 9th city council meeting. With this, at this time, is there a motion to adopt this resolution by show of hand? Thank you Alderman Cannon and thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. At this time, by show of hand, is there any discussion on this topic? Alderman Cannon, your hands up, the floor is yours. You may have to unmute. We still can't hear you, or at least I can't.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted, sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. I did go down and take a look at the piece with Mr. Horn last week. And it's kind of shocking that we were able to use it as long as we did. I think the new piece, if they use it like they say they're going to, should be a big benefit to the city. Whereas we should be able to pave more potholes on a given day just because there's less work to do attaching and detaching the new piece. I also want to compliment the Public Works people for going back and get a better price than we had last week. So they've actually saved us a little bit more money. I guess for be a one member of the vehicle replacement committee, I just want to offer my support for it. I think would be a good purchase for the city, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Cannon. Any further discussions from any other member of the council? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll and members unmute?
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka. Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That makes six in favor and not opposed, and this resolution is adopted. This brings us down to line item B, and that's resolution number 20-r-64. And that's to authorize the replacement of the public works paving equipment trailer, which was postponed on June 9, 2020 city council meeting as well. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this resolution? Thank you Alderman O'Brien and thank you Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Lowering your hands now in making way for discussion by show of hand, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yeah.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
That makes six in favor and then opposed, this resolution, this resolution is adopted as well. This moves us further down the agenda to consent ordinances for first reading. It consists of two items, items C and D. Now staff is asking for a waiver of the first reading, so this ordinance can be approved immediately. Is there Alderman willing to make the motion for waiving the first reading on this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Sunaka, is there a second? Thank you Alderman O'Brien. The ordinance number 20-24 is to approve confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the first reading by show of hand, of course? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for final approval? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
That's six in favor and then opposed, this ordinance moves forward for final reading. Ordinance number 20-24, confirming and extending the state of emergency. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yeah.
With six in favor and not opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to item D, ordinance number 20, excuse me. Let me back up here because staff is also asking for a waiver of the first reading on this ordinance to be approved immediately. So let's start by seeing if there's an Alderman willing to make a motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance. Thank you Alderman Cannon for the first, thank you Alderman Diastis for the second. Ordinance number 20-25 is to authorize an amendment to special use authorized by ordinance 86-27 for City Hall property commonly known as 3600 Kirchhoff Road to authorize additional property at the 2809 Owl Lane as municipal use and approve the final plat of Rolling Meadows City Hall subdivision. Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the first reading? Alderman Bud Matts, I saw your hand came up first. Down now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask what the benefit is for that staff requires this to be waived for a second reading? It seems that there's public interest and if other residents want to come out and, and express their opinions on this, especially if they're worried about if the city's going to be a good neighbor to them or not. I think they're entitled to that, so unless there's some specific reason that we need to do this for some timeliness so that we can accomplish some goal, I'm curious as to why we're doing this.
Thank you Alderman Bud Matts. Is staff or attorney Wolf, either one know what the immediacy is for this? Director Horn, I see your hands up, if you have the answers, feel free.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we, we had requested our staff try and get this item on this agenda as opposed to having to wait till the July 14th agenda, which is when we would typically have to wait for it, meaning it would not be approved until the 28th. It's not that it's a rush. We have contractors in the town right now that we cannot do any of the public improvements that we're talking, we talked to residents about at the planning and zoning commission till this gets final approved through the city council. So it was just really a way to expedite being able to complete some of the improvements that were discussed at the planning and zoning commission and, and some of the things that are proposed in your packet.
And from a legal perspective, this, the ordinance passage component of it at the city council level is the reason why two readings are before the city council normally is because those are the rules that have been established by the municipality. It's not legally required under Illinois law that an ordinance go before a city council for two reasons. However, that is the procedure that has been established by the city of Rolling Meadows. The public hearing process before the plan commission afforded, that, that is the venue that affords the public the opportunity to speak and have a hearing with respect to whether they have any concerns related to the special use. So that's something also to take into consideration. Most municipalities can pass an ordinance on, on one reading. It's just because it's a procedural requirement of the city.
Thank you Attorney Wolf, Director Horn, I see your hand came back up. If there's additional comments, feel free.
Yeah, just specifically for Alderman Bud Matt's comment regarding residents. After the residents had an opportunity to speak at the planning and zoning commission, while Assistant Director Charlton led the meeting, I went out and met with all the residents in the hallway. And I informed them that they should in fact come. I actually remember speaking to Mr. Fox and I, I recommended that they do come to this city council meeting. Told them it was going to be discussed at this meeting. So if they wanted to provide additional comments specifically to the city council, that this would be the meeting that they should come to. There were about six people, I think, in, in the audience, so.
Thank you Director Horn, Alderman Bud Matts, any further, will you have the floor?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion items on the waiving of the first reading? Seeing none, the question, Alderman Sunaka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I was not clicking earlier.
That's okay.
I just wanted to confirm that the, the planning and zoning commission met twice on this item and was the, is that correct?
Director Horn, if you have feedback.
I believe they met once, a public hearing, but I would ask Joellen to chime in if I'm wrong. I believe there was one public meeting, sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay.
This was noticed for an earlier meeting. We did continue it to a Zoom meeting where it was briefly discussed at the Zoom meeting and then continued to the special meeting that was also held in June. So that the topics were actually discussed at two separate meetings, one Zoom meeting and one meeting in the council chambers.
Thank you for that clarification. I have no further questions at this point.
Thank you Alderman Sunaka, I'm going to go ahead and lower the hands that are stretched there. Okay. So seeing no further questions at this time, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for final approval? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, the ordinance does move forward for final approval. Again, that ordinance number 20-25, authorizing an amendment to special use authorized by ordinance number 86-27 for City Hall property, power for property commonly known as 3600 Kirchhoff Road to authorize the additional property at 2809 Owl Lane as municipal use and approve the final plat, Rolling Meadows City Hall subdivision. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance by show of hand? Thank you Alderman Diastis, thank you Alderman Bud Matts. Is there any discussion on this final approval? Alderman's, Alderman O'Brien?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do just want to follow up, I appreciate Mr. Fox, he was not, because this property is located within the third ward. I did not have a chance to talk with Mr. Fox, he was not one of the residents I talked with. But I did have the opportunity to attend one of the planning and zoning commission meetings just to listen in. Was not able to make the special meeting last week based on a prior commitment. But I do just want to follow up that definitely all in the write-up tonight, the materials that we were provided, is that Assistant Director Charlton's been great working with the residents that had concerns about the drainage in the back and a six-inch pipe versus an eight-inch pipe as well as landscaping and anything we can do to make it keep that residential feel. I do just want to reaffirm that is the comments from the residents that I've had the opportunity to talk from. As I know Director Horn and Assistant Director Charlton as well, is nobody's 100% opposed to it from the handful of residents that reached out to me, is they would just like anything we can do from limiting on-street parallel parking, as Mr. Fox noticed, to the shrubbery along the way for screening. Anything we can really do to keep that residential look and feel. I've already talked to Ms. Charlton about if the two signs of do not enter are really, really required from a legal and insurance perspective, or if they could be moved back a little bit. And then clearly, as Deputy Chief Searcher had said, all the officers, once this does move forward, if approved, will be briefed at the roll calls to only use that exit when the other one may be blocked, when a police business is being taken care of in the gallery area there. Or they said sometimes a contractor truck will be parked there doing business, so. They did have overall support, I'm just asking that staff continues to work in collaboration with the residents. And we really do try and address any concerns they have primarily, keeping that residential look. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on, new business to line item E, it's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for June 23, 2020. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you Alderman Sunaka, thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. By show of hand, is there any discussion on the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us further due, the consent resolutions consist of two items, items F and G. Does any Alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolution? Please show your hand. Do. Seeing none, the chair declares it, in order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate, is there such a motion by show of hand? Thank you Alderman Diastis and thank you Alderman Sunaka for the second. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? First resolution on here, line item F, resolution number 20-r-65 is to approve a sidewalk and parking bay improvement agreement with the Meadow Edge Improvement Association. The next is line item G, resolution number 20-r-66 to award a contract for professional engineering services for proposed drainage study for the Park Street Storm Sewer Improvement Area. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That makes six in favor and then opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us This brings us further to other business and reports. For the mayor's appointments, there are two reappointments to the library board of directors. The first is Jess Arroyo, and we will take these individually for a roll call vote. At this time, I would ask for a motion by show of hands for Mr. Arroyo's reappointment. Thank you Alderman Cannon. Thank you Alderman O'Brien. By show of hand, is there any discussion on the reappointment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Mr. Jess Arroyo is reappointed to the library board. The next is Marcia Kramer. Marcia too is asking for a reportment to the library board of directors. By show of hand, is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Kramer? Thank you Alderman Cannon. Thank you Alderman O'Brien. By show of hand, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmatz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, Ms. Marcia Kramer is reappointed to the library board of directors. Beyond the mayor's appointments are the mayor's proclamations, and I do not have any proclamations this week. City clerks report, is there anything from the city clerk to report?
No, not tonight.
Thank you Ms. Rose. This brings us now to the staff reports. And again, this is the time that there are no discussions during the staff reports. And the first item of interest is the community items of interest. Manager Crumstock, when you are ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mayor and City Council. Obviously before you, we do want to start off with that the city will be conducting a blood drive this Thursday, June 25th between 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM here at City Hall, as I mentioned, in the council chambers. Due to social distancing, appointments are really needed. If you're just doing a walk-in and they do not have anybody available at that point in time, or in the room with them at that point in time, they will take you at that point. So it's really important to schedule with Vitalent at 877-258-4825. Wearing a face covering mask are required. And again, it's a nice time. There is a need for blood throughout Illinois. And Vitalent will also be conducting COVID-19 antibody testing for those individuals who complete the donation process during the blood drive. And again, that is this Thursday, June 25th between 1:00 and 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. As Mayor mentioned earlier, June 27th is our first city market for the season. It's between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the community church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Face covering, one-way travel and social distancing will be part of the event. There will be a tent for the mayor and the city council at this event, like we did last year and we talked about. Between 10 and 11, we hope that the council will be there. If you stay longer, that would be great. The city council tent will be right by the Census 2020 tent. So we hope that if you have not conducted or completed your Census 2020, that you will actually do that at the event. The finance counter, front counter, I should say, will be closed next week, June 29th to, through July 3rd. This is to help out in the IRP changeover to complete all the billing that we need to do. This has been actually delayed as the council note, for a few months, we're finally moving ahead with that. And again, during that week, there is really no payments being done by finance. But again, this is part of the upgrade in the new IRP system that we actually have. We do want to remind people that Friday, July 3rd, City Hall Public Works will be closed in observance over the 4th of July holiday. However, because that's a Friday, there will be no delay in refuse collection for that week. So for that entire week, there is no refuse change and collection will happen. As you've been hearing me say throughout these months, please do not flush wipes down the toilet. And again, they should only be in the garbage or if only toilet paper should be down the toilet. We still are having issues where people are putting wipes down. We do want to mention, as we've been doing since Census 2020 started. And as I mentioned before, if you have not done so, please take a few minutes out of your day to respond to the US Census survey. We're still doing a great job here in the city of Rolling Meadows. Our response rate is at 75%. It is outpacing the overall state response of 66.2% or Kocani rate of 60.8. And that was as of June 15th. Everybody wins. This is the distribution of money throughout for the next 10 years. As a reminder for the US Census survey, this time you can do it online at 2020census.gov. You can do it by phone, 844-330-2020, or using the printed US survey that was actually sent to you. We do want to mention the reminder to, to the community, the IRS has announced the federal income tax filing due date is automatically extended to April 15th, 20, from April 15th to July 15th, 2020. IRS urges taxpayers who have not done so, please make sure that you do it by that time. The state of Illinois has also extended the Illinois income tax filing to July 15th. We do want to remind folks, residents, businesses, if you're having a hard time paying your utility bill or your food and beverage payment, please contact finance at 847-394-8500 or email finance@cityrm.org. We can always put you on a payment plan. We can work with you at that point. It is June. It's one of our months that we do the E News and Views. It can be found on our city website. Please visit www.citirm.org, click on the News and Views tab. Please shop Rolling Meadows. And again, it's really important during these times. Please remember our big boxes, our restaurants and our small businesses. Because it is the end of the month, we do want to mention for future meetings, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, July 7th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. The main items tentatively to be discussed are the September 24th Business and Community Showcase. There is a 6B request for 90980 Carnegie Street. There's a 6B request for 4000 Industrial Avenue. And then we do have an update about our next level Northwest Rolling Meadows graduate Lakeshore title. Also on that night, Tuesday, July 7th at 7:30 PM in the council chambers, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting. So tentative items that they will be discussing is a preliminary final approval of plat subdivision for consolidation of two lots at 4280, 4290 Kirchhoff Road. That's in our R1 single-family resident district. James Belazar is the petitioner. And we do have the item that came from the committee of the whole regarding the G1, GA, GAC discussion that we had that will be at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we do have an update to the status of the discussion of key items and timing for the zoning ordinance update. There is one more item that I do want to add, which is not in the packet. This would be the newest one that we can mention, is that on Saturday officially Tropical Smoothie Cafe located at 1458 Gulf Road will be opening at 8:00 AM. Friday, they're going to be doing some training. But we do welcome them to the committee for people saying, what's 1458 Gulf Road? That's the second half of American Mattress. This was actually subdivided. So American Mattress is half the size that it used to be. But Tropical Smoothie Cafe will be opening at 1458. We actually are very excited to have them here. Obviously, they have a few locations in the state of Illinois and we do welcome them. And at a later day, hopefully they will be having a ribbon cutting, virtual or real, depends on what happens. So with that, those are community items of interest for this meeting.
Thank you Manager Crumstock. Why don't you keep the floor going with the May 2020 new businesses and new business report?
So for May, we really didn't have any new businesses. It was only compliance licensing that we had going on during May. But obviously, as I mentioned before, in June, we will have at least one new business that we just mentioned, but a few others that we have in place. So they're either going open up in June or they will be opening up in July. But with that, that is the new business.
Thank you again, Manager Crumstock. This brings us now to the next item on the agenda, which is matters not on the agenda. By show of hand, is there any matters not on the agenda? All right, Alderman Cannon, then Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cannon, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick items. I would like the city council and, and one of the upcoming meetings to consider some rule changes where businesses would be allowed to use the parkway for small signs through the end of the year. In light of the difficult environment that a lot of them have, I would suggest we try to make every accommodation we can to try to help them increase their business and their visibility. So I'd like to at least have a discussion about it. If people don't feel good about it, we can listen to those, those thoughts also. Also, I just wanted to just bring up a subject that Public Works gets sick of me talking about, but it's something that they're very aware of. They can't fix it, but it's something that's really getting dangerous. The median strip in Quentin Road is getting dangerously broken up. There is now a piece sitting in the middle of the highway now that's almost a foot long, a piece of concrete. It's probably four or five inches thick. And in the last couple of weeks, we've had some pieces that have ended up on the roadway. County refuses to do anything, but I think we just need to be on record as saying, we, we were begging them to fix it, but they won't. But maybe if they hear enough voices, they will actually send some people out and fix the problem. But it's really getting serious, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for listening.
Thank you Alderman Cannon. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies, I was having a hard time getting that mute button. Just a follow-up, and this might be for yourself, Mr. Mayor, or for Attorney Wolf. With the state now going to phase four on Friday, and then I know that the planning zoning had their special meeting in person. Being a new member to EDC, I'm on, on that committee now, and I see that we're going to do our in-person meeting starting July 7th. Are we planning as a council to get back together starting in July 14th based on the new meeting gathering information that's part of phase four? Because I know we discussed that in earlier June. I just didn't know if we were going to do a touch base when the new regulations came on and we didn't move to phase four.
So ideally, that is my plan. Again, and it goes back to this being a democratic process too. We're all members of this council, and if there are still a certain amount of members who are reluctant or hesitant, you know, I feel no need to jeopardize their, their feeling of well-being and their potential safety. You know, we did have remote meetings adjusted for us and with these cases, we can play a case by case. Honestly, I'm indifferent, but like I said, I want to take the considerations of the council as a whole into it. And I'll do what the council prefers.
Do you have a preference, Mr. Mayor? This is a follow-up on that then, because I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. I'm not one that's ready to jump on mass transit to head back into the, the office or things like that. If I do go into the office, I'm driving. When I, we're not back in the office yet. When I do, I, I find myself driving. I'm not ready to jump on mass transit yet. Is there a preference from your perspective? Because I absolutely want to honor what our peers say. Is that versus having some in the chambers, some at home versus that you'd rather us all either be remote or in person? Because I know from a facilitation perspective, it's probably not the easiest thing to do.
So it's a nightmare to do a blended version. And for me, I'm indifferent, right? But then I have to take into consideration my wife and my children and my, my, you know, extended family, right? Like we've done a, a good job quarantining so we can be around those we want to be around.
Yep.
So me, I'm indifferent, but then I have to listen to my wife, who is a teammate in my life with this, and I have to honor her, her wishes as well. So for me, I'm indifferent. I can do with it. I'm happy to go. I'll wear the safe, you know, the face masks and take precautions. But it would not make her feel at ease. And is that worth it on a voluntary basis? Or can we continue until there's some better way of working at things? But again, I'm not the only one, right? And there's other members on the council. And so I want to take their considerations or their feelings into consideration.
Great, thank you.
We'll go right there. Any other matters not on the agenda? Alderman Sanoika.
Regarding the same topic about whether or not council should be meeting physically in chambers as opposed to virtually, I have not had any residents that have reached out to me and stated that they would want us to meet in person. They, they feel that if anything, by meeting virtually or perhaps blended in the future, that this actually opens up more opportunities for residents to participate because instead of just tuning in to what's being said, they feel that they are able to also dial in and speak and not have to necessarily drive to council and wait in council. They can wait at home while they're doing other tasks. Sometimes for some of our committee of the whole meetings, our topics can go for hours before we move to an agenda item that an individual wanted to speak on. And this actually provides that flexibility for residents. So I, when we do have this discussion about going forward, if we're able to, per Illinois Open Meetings Act law, I think that we should also consider what benefits meeting virtually going forward or blended going forward provide for our, for our residents and community as a whole.
Thank you Alderman Sanoika. Anything further on that?
Not at this time. I would prefer that we continue to meet virtually for those reasons. And because more individuals are able to participate at this time, until we receive any resident or negative feedback on this, I, I see no reason why we would need to meet physically at this point. I, I think that I would like to hear from staff as well. I know a lot of our staff members don't necessarily live in the city of Rolling Meadows. And if we have long nights, if it is beneficial for them to also be meeting at home, I, I think we should consider that as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien, I saw your hand pop back up, so I'll give it back to you and then Alderman Bessesi. Might be muted.
Yeah, I had, I was muted and then went unmuted. This is probably more for Attorney Wolf. Alderman Sanoika made me think of something. The Opens Meeting Act, are we still okay by that? The state bill, I think it was at 125, was on Governor Pritzker's desk in early June. I know you mentioned earlier in an email that government businesses exempt from that, but I didn't know if you had more of an update from the state legal aspect about the Opens Meeting Act to Alderman Sanoika's point, if there was any changes in that yet.
Sure. So the bill that you're referring to was Senate Bill 2135, which has now been enacted. It's been signed by the governor. Throughout, throughout the entire duration of the, of this pandemic, government has been considered an essential business. So even when the first executive order by the governor was issued, government was an essential business and, and could have continued to meet in person. However, those executive orders allowed for this remote attendance at meetings. So this public act that was just recently enacted does allow for the continuation of that with certain requirements. So, you know, there has to be the declaration by the governor regarding the pandemic. And there has to be, the head of the, the public body has to determine that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise pursuant to the Open Meetings Act is not practical or prudent at this time. And then, you know, as we've been doing now, you have to vote, you know, a roll call vote for every, every single matter. Everyone has to be able to be heard. And so the city has taken all measures and compliance with the law. So either way, whatever is decided by the city council, the, the law allows for, for both.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Bessesi, matters not on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same topic. Basically, my two cents worth. My bigger concern is not so much that the council goes into the chamber, though I would prefer to continue doing this virtually. It's more residents. We can't tell residents they can't come in to a meeting. So if we open up a meeting and let's say we have a topic that is, you know, 100 residents want to come in the building, what do we do? We're not screening people for COVID. Let them come in and we pack as many in as we can. So for that reason, while we're still doing a state of emergency within our city, I see no reason to change what we're doing. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you Alderman Bessesi.
Thank you.
Any other matters not on the agenda? Okay. If there aren't any other matters, then by show of hand, Alderman Budmatz, is it a matter now on the agenda?
It's a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so that's where I'm going with the, keep that hand up. I'm looking for the motion to adjourn. So a second would be Alderman Diastis. Now I need the clerk to call the roll.
Cannon.
Absolutely.
Budmatz.
100%.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Want to stay a little longer? No.
Come on. Sunoika. Sanoyka?
Yes.
And six in favor and none opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Safe drive home for those who are out.